Still finishing up the remodeling a little bit.
Are you still finishing it up?
That house had needed a lot of remodeling.
Just updating.
Excuse me, updating.
Yeah, Donna's guys, I've used their, their painting skills. They've been in there for two months.
Two months?
Todd.
Both Jim. Mr. Carmen who waved back and forth.
Just two guys.
Sounds like we're gonna need to send the county.
I guess it wouldn't pay attention, Todd, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Sounds like it doesn't.
It does.
It's just paint and flooring.
Did he get the proper permit?
It's just paint and flooring.
This is here.
I'll let it slide this time.
Okay, thank you.
Well, hopefully our guest speaker will arrive, or this is gonna be relatively short meeting.
We just, we just ate dinner with him, he'll be here.
Oh, he'll be here, okay.
I was gonna ask you, all that work on your boat, does it still float?
Just barely. That's what I don't know.
Good, how you doing? Good one. Hi Donna.
Hi Donna.
Here you're moving into town, is that your same man?
Your guys are back.
How's that going?
Oh, are they? Do they have some boyfriend?
Excited?
Are they getting repaid?
Have you heard that?
We've never lived in town.
I've heard it from my brother. Distraction cost is sky high.
You're in the middle of nowhere right now, right? So what made you decide to come in?
Sounds like a true life owner.
Out in Mexico?
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
That's the kind of thing you'd.
I'd like, I want to do that.
Well, okay, everyone, it is by 1:30 by all of my various timepieces. And I suppose we should start on time. We have today, beginning at 1:30, a council, mayor and city council work session here Friday, April 16th, 2021. There is a current copy of the Meetings Act of Nebraska posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Roughly above Mr. Brun's head there. Uh, there will be no formal vote or action taken during this meeting. This is simply work session, so it's informational only, no voting. Members from the public are not allowed to comment, so your folks are welcome to listen. We appreciate you being here, but there will not be public comment during this meeting, other than by the presenter, who hopefully will be here in the next minute or two. And, let's see. We will call the meeting to order. And we'll do a roll call. We are lacking a secretary this afternoon due to a small issue, so Mr. Kibben, would you shout everyone's name and let them respond?
Councilman Nisley.
Here.
Councilwoman Tryon.
Right, up here.
Council, Councilman Bolt.
Here.
Councilman Lucas.
Here.
Councilman Garrett.
Here.
Councilman Karma. Councilman Rea.
Here.
Councilman Woods.
Okay, Mr. Woods is not with us at this time, but hopefully will join us shortly. I can see Renee gesturing out there that Mr. Grony is on his way in the door, so he'll be here momentarily. Mr. Woods.
Mr. Woods.
Okay, Mr. Woods will be here as well, in a moment.
They must have had a car wreck.
So we're gonna declare a, uh, do we, do you see Mr. Grony out there?
Oh, no.
Okay. Well, everyone, we're gonna start this meeting with a seven, uh, let's say, 10-minute break. We will reconvene at approximately a quarter until 2 o'clock. We'll assume that Mr. Grony will need a minute or two to get set up, so I apologize, but he's got important information that we all need to hear, and it's something that's very important to our process. So, we're gonna have a break for 10 minutes, folks, relax.
Great.
I'll have to thank Mike for making me look nice.
You got the secret information in there?
Yeah. Very important.
Mr. Grony is not with us. We have an opportunity today, we don't get opportunities a lot, to hear directly from the people who actually created a piece of legislation. And as you are all aware, our own Senator Mike Grony was instrumental in creating this legislation. It's been commonly known as micro TIF. So we have this opportunity to have him present directly to us on the implementation, how it's created, and we can certainly ask him questions as he proceeds, correct? Okay. These council work sessions are informal, so we don't need to request the floor, you can just ask questions. If I see somebody who maybe isn't getting a chance to ask questions, I may intervene, say, "Mr. Bolt, do you have a question?" or something like that, just to make sure everyone gets a chance to ask a question if they need to. Without further ado, Mr. Grony, you have the floor.
Thank you. Got a handout here. Thanks for the invite, Mayor, and Matt. I've talked to a couple of city councils, smaller towns, about it. But you all know why I pursued this. My position on TIF over the years has been misused. Wasn't being used in areas where where the blighted substandard in the older parts of towns were, but then I finally came to a realization talking to developers. It was hard to do in the older parts of towns because they needed expanses of area and trying to do it in an older part of town where one house or two houses were dilapidated. There might be on the other corner of the lot, somebody that's lived there 50 years and had a beautiful tulip bed. So they couldn't access the land. And the way the system was set up, the cost to do a TIF was just prohibitive. Mr. Jacobson kept telling me, we got such a high cost of lawyers and consulting fees and everything, it has to be a certain amount of money. So one day I came to conclusion, talking to individuals, Councilman Woods, who owned some rental properties, that he would love to do that. It was, you had a situation here in town where some individual citizens got upset about your housing situation and the quality of the housing, well, there's a lot of individuals like to fix their homes up, but the property tax burden later, it couldn't be covered from rents and things, so. So what I created was the micro TIF. Cut through all the red tape. You, the city council picks an area where you think you want to, uh, blight and substandard. And I had a conversation with city council people, you could, I talked to a small town, they did it on their own. You don't have to pay some consultant $40,000. You can have your city planner pick out an area, study the average age of the home, just put down the facts that the infrastructure is old, the street curbs are old, the streets are old, the sewer is old, and it is blighted and substandard, and you declare it blighted and substandard. You don't need to hire a consultant to do that. For one thing, I trust you guys, but you have nobody to tell you you can't. There's no state agency that can come in and say, "You blighted and substandarded that wrong, it didn't fit the qualifications." So as far as the rumors I've heard, well, we, we can't do West Third Street because the cost prohibitive of doing the study, you can do it yourself. And you could pick small areas, you could pinpoint small areas in the residential areas and say, "We're gonna, we're gonna..." Because I've heard also that you don't want to hit your 35% by doing big blocks of land, you don't have to do big blocks of land. So that part, to get it to blighted and substandard, you're completely in charge of that. But then what happens if you decide to become a micro TIF and allow it in the community? It's very simple. An individual in its blighted and substandard area picks up one of the applications for expediated review. One of the questions from the chamber and stuff was, well, you say in your statute you're gonna have a form, you're gonna have a county assessor have a form, and then you're going to have the city, "How do, how does the city incur debt?" So right after the pass, we got ahold of the Department of Revenue, Department of Economic Development, and Department of, well, we did with the banking lobby, I talked to Ty a couple times. He gave me some good points. And, uh, so we wanted to create the application that was uniform across state, that anybody can figure it out. You don't need to hire a lawyer to fill it out. Anybody could pick one up, fill it out. And, uh, simple questions, "What are the existing uses of the condition of the property within a redevelopment project area?" You just say it's a housing unit. And it's in poor, poor, poor disrepair. Number two, "What is the purpose used for the property within a redevelopment project area?" It's, it's a rental house or, or an abode for a family. "What is the current age of existing structure?" And that's easy enough, you go down to county courthouse, 60, it has to be, it has to be 60 years old, at least. So you say it's 70 years old, and there's an awful lot of homes in this community that's over 60 years old. And businesses, everything on Main Street is over 60 years old. Describe improvements to be made, and you just say you're gonna rebuild it, you're gonna remodel it, put a new roof, and it doesn't have to be exact. "What is the increased asset value of the property?" "Development project area estimated occurs as all the redevelopment project," you just fill it in. $250,000 or less for a house, $1 million for a multi-home unit, and $10 million for a business. And you can do that yourself. You don't have to have a lawyer or anybody in the city, and you've handed in. And you put the existing valuation on there, what it is today. It's an old home, I heard with the packing plant rumors and stuff, there's speculation going on already on housing, and you're gonna have a higher tax base already because of the speculation. People are buying older houses thinking, "It's gonna be people moving to town, isn't that good? A good thing to have." But, uh, you put, you put down from the courthouse or whatever what the valuation is, now you got two years to fix it up. They just file it with your clerk. You don't, or your planning commission. Then they got two years to fix it up, and the reason we did two years, because I suppose a lot of you, like my wife and I did, our first home or two homes, where we put a lot of, uh, our own equity, work equity into it, gives you time to fix it up. Within two years, you go down to county, the next form that the county treasurer assessor fills out, "Certificated Completion of Expediated Community Redevelopment Plan." They come out and look at it, they tell what the new valuation was gonna be, and you've come down to the city clerk and said, "I got it done in two years." All right? And then, uh, you create a debt document, because our constitution says on TIF, the community must incur indebtedness. So the little towns, I was, didn't want to go out in debt for $20,000 or $5,000 or $2,000 every TIF. So we created the, um, promissory note. You have, the city has incurred indebtedness with a promissory. The promise is, you fix this up, you fix this piece of property up, and we owe you the next 10 increments of tax increase, and that's how we pay off your promis, our note to you. There was no debt incurred, just the promise. If you do this, and we promise the next 10 increments to you. The note says, and the statute says, it's either or. It's 10 increment payments or the amount of the, of the promissory note, whichever comes first. So in other words, you, all you have to make sure when you fill it out is you estimate what the 10 increments are gonna be. We, nobody knows if we keep, if the community growth valuations will go up. Hopefully you drop your tax rates, and the taxes don't go up because of growth, but, so if you, if you figure it's $10,000 over the next 10 years, make, make that promissory note for 12. Give that person, make sure they get all 10 increments, in case their valuations go up. People around them build their houses and house evaluations go up, and their taxes go up, and all of a sudden the increment, their, uh, promissory note is paid off in eight increments. We want them to get all 10. So, but it's as simple as that, and your business office, it's like they do on the, on the larger TIFs. They notify the county treasurer that we have this list of TIFs, micro TIFs, and for the next 10 increments on that, it's up to the county assessor, treasurer to send you the increment payment of taxes, and then you give it back to the owner. And we also made sure it's the owner of record. Because we want a developer, I'd love to create more mom and pop, uh, father and son construction crews who go out and buy these old houses, or somebody hires them to buy an old house, fix it up, and then when they sell it, the increment follows the owner. That isn't how regular TIF works. The bond is sold, and whoever owns the indebtedness gets the payment. The money stays local, it stays local to the local owner. All of those examples I hear, you're doing some, some, or the community is doing some apartments up above the old downtown, like a lot of communities. That's perfect. You've already got that blighted, that's perfect. Those folks remodel those condos and make them into condos for the next 10 years. Those folks who buy those, whoever remodel them and rents them, will get their increment back to help pay for their input.
Senator Grony, uh, just to, I'm a little confused, so if I fix up a house, and then I have 10 years to repay that indebtedness with the
property tax, I'm sorry, yeah, I have 10 years to collect on my lower valuation. On your promissory note.
But let's say if I sell that house in two years, what happens at that point?
Follows the new owner.
Follows the new owner, so it stays on that property for that period of time?
So what I foresee, uh, a contractor, somebody, uh, fixes up an old house and says, "All right, you're moving to town to work at the packing plant management, or you're here for the mall or something. You can buy one of those houses out there on the golf course that you've tipped. You're gonna pay $5,000 of property taxes, because you're not getting that back, it's going to the developer chief. But if you buy my house for, and you're, and it's older part of town, and you're gonna have $5,000 property taxes, you're gonna get four of it back, or 4,500 bucks back, you are. Or if you're moving out of town, you're, and you put your house up for sale, and you got five years left, that's a selling point. It's a way to fix up the old parts of town and, uh, and encourage people. And for the city, you got the infrastructure there, you got the street there, and you've got the water mains, so you have none of that added taxation and bonding to put when somebody goes out in the wheat field or cornfield or the golf course, somebody's gotta put all that infrastructure in. It's already in the older part of town. And I don't know how many houses would qualify, or, but I seen enough when I ran for office knocking on doors that I could tell you some houses that should have been fixed up or could be. But, especially the guys who rent, you know, with property taxes, you put another $50,000 in an old house, you're gonna get another $1,000 of property tax, that's a month's rent. And the market only will only bear that you lost for property taxes. So, uh, that's what I envision, the old downtown businesses, uh, the Pawnee, I've talked to the owner there, that he, he's perfect if he does it on his own. He'd have a couple years to do it, up to $10 million. And without all the, you know, even for that project, if he went through the TIF project, he's gonna have lawyers and, and, uh, and plans, and he'd be much better off just doing the micro TIF and fixing it up.
Senator Grony, I've got a couple of questions. One, I mean, could you go as low as just, you know, blighting one lot? I mean, not that I would suggest, it looks bad.
I wouldn't want to see
Yeah.
Todd's picture in the paper, of what, of the map, of the colored map of how you're
Yeah, okay.
Blighted and substandard areas.
Yeah.
But no, I would, you could do small areas, you know where they're at.
Yeah.
You could do an old, uh, let's say you had an old, uh, mobile home park, you could do that, and, and you could turn it into a lower cost housing. You know, the area where they're building Habitat for Humanity, you could do that, and one of the problems with Habitat for Humanity is happening now, five or six years later, yes, the people put their sweat equity, they, they really want to build that house, but they still have a low-income job, and their property taxes are four grand on it. But if you could build a Habitat for Humanity with this, those folks for at least their first 10 years would get their, their increment back, if you did it on an old house. Now, something I would like to work on and bring in a bill next year, which I would probably go through, is I probably should have added vacant lots, because there's an awful lot of vacant lots that's been sitting for 40 and 50 years in these old parts of town. Or it's a big lot, and, uh, so that people could bring in a double wide, not a double wide trailer, but a manufactured home, and put a house in there for $180,000 or so, and, uh, but that's not, we just need to get it started. I think it's a boon for a community to try to improve your, improve your older parts of residential areas and old parts, uh, business areas.
Okay. My other question was, like on the Pawnee, is it possible for them to, what I would call double dip, they could do micro TIF, and then go ahead and get regular TIF too?
No.
Okay.
TIF is TIF.
All right.
You know, and they get one, it's still TIF, it's still under the same section of law, it's just another avenue of doing it.
Well, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
No, they could do other programs that are out there, but
Yeah.
Just like TIF does.
Okay, thanks.
Senator Grony? Oh, go ahead, I have spoken.
That's okay, thank you for being here. So back to the Pawnee, if the owners, um, could not finish their project in a two-year time period, can they just TIF sections of that as they go along? No?
You'd have to do, and you'd have to get it done within two years.
So, so they can't just pick out like, you know, one floor? So they can't just pick out like, you know, one floor and TIF that, micro TIF that, or the second floor?
I, up to you guys, but no, because you'd have one address. The project would exist already at that address.
Under the address?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But if you TIFed it today, and you, two years later, you only had it half done and the value was 5 million, you get that increment. If next year they did some more and the assessor came out and it was six and a half million, and next year was 9 million, you're not limited to the date that you filed it. It's whatever the increment was when you paid your taxes that year. So it would just keep growing. But it doesn't go beyond 10 years, it stops at 10 years. So if you finished the last floor, the ninth year, you'd get one, and you had a new assessment on it, you'd get one year of the increment.
Okay.
Because it's just one tax payment and one division of increment base. So.
Senator Grony, I love this concept and thank you for bringing it to legislature and getting it passed. I have a feeling you're a big picture guy. I'm kind of a big picture guy. So you probably haven't gone through the details of how we formulate this plan, or have you? Like, for example, who would review the applications? Who would administer? Would it be our city departments, maybe like our planning commission?
You can't turn them down and you don't have to approve them. Once you say you're going to do it and it's a blighted subde, area, if they bring that application in, it's approved.
Okay, so they bring it in, maybe to the planning department or something like that?
The planning department, they turn it in.
Okay.
It sits in a file.
Okay.
You have no responsibility to follow up on it.
Okay.
Nobody can point at you or your city clerk or your planning department and say, you didn't notify me, my two years was up. That's on them.
Okay.
And they could bring it back six months from the assessor. They go down to the assessor and get that filled out, that the project is now completed as far as I'm concerned. And they take it down and the assessor gives an assessment, takes it back to your city planner and hands it to them. Your city planner or whoever, whoever does that, probably Dawn.
The accounting department, right?
Notifies the county treasurer that these units are TIFed and the county treasurer splits it off.
So a little bit of workload for those guys, but.
Yeah, but they do it now. But we also made sure, so you don't have to fill out, if you've ever seen a TIF report, you've got every project and you've got a summation of how much they paid this year, it's really nice. You can see when, how far along each TIF is and what the base was. You get the report by year. So let's say you had 10 of them in 2022. Dawn, I don't know if I'm saying, I'm trying to think of her title, but I know Dawn. Anyway, she totals up the 10 base values. She totals up the 10 excess values. And she says, and this year, and she reports that year, micro TIFs, 10 projects, this amount of money, this amount of increment payment. So she don't have to create it, and then she just takes it from there. Because all 10 of those will be over at the same time and they'll disappear off your report. We made sure it was combined. You might have, end up with hopefully 100 of them or something over the next five years or something. Instead of, because that'd be a lot of bookwork to do the same thing for each one of those. So we tried to make it as simple as possible and less burdensome as possible. That's what the promissory note, you don't have to. You tie a bad problem, some bankers, they wanted to monetize it. You get a chance to, by golly, I can monetize that and give a loan like a normal TIF and then you pay off your loan with your.
Right.
What it does for the builder is they can go to the bank or whoever their lender and say, look, I'm going to TIF this, I'm going to borrow money, or I'm going to do it by steps. And I need to borrow money or mortgage that for the next 10 years, I'm going to, my mortgage payment is going to be $3,000 less. So it makes it more feasible for me to make my payments.
Right.
It's, that's the advantage to the lender and also the, that he knows.
So it's up to the owner to monetize that with his banker?
With his banker.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And in the future, it's just the reverse.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. Thanks.
Senator, I've got a couple of comments and then I've got a good question for you, I think. But so you guys know, he really did involve the Nebraska bankers, DED and all that, and trying to get this simple, and it is. The fact that it has a 0% promissory note, the timeframe, I mean, in my opinion, administering this is going to be very, very manageable. This came out well, from my opinion, so thank you. Because I know you put a lot of work into ironing those things out, which a lot of senators don't do on these things, so we all appreciate that a lot. And Dawn, on your question, I think maybe by condo-ing, like on the Pawnee, you could potentially get there to, on your question.
Right.
But back to, Mr. Woods was asking you about that individual house. I'm curious, if somebody came to the city and said, hey, I've got a house on my project, on my, I've got a house, I want to do this big project, and, but I'm not in a blighted and substandard area, but they meet the criteria and they came to the city, could we then, I mean, as much as even like a half a block or a block? Is that what your vision is on it?
I mean, that's why you don't need to do these wide, big studies.
Okay.
Or you could do a big study and say, and subdivide it. There's not a law that says you didn't do a study and the whole north side is blighted and substandard. Everybody gets up in arms. But you decide that, no, these three block section, we did this study. I don't think there's, don't quote me, I can check it out. But I don't think there's a timeline on that study that it, in three years, it expires. You could just say, all right, we've done this study. It qualifies for blighted and substandard, nothing has changed. We, as a city council, are now going to blight and substandard this block. I don't see any reason why you couldn't do that.
Great, thank you. That will work well.
So I mean, I just envision it as piecemeal, where you can fix some bad blighted areas and get somebody to fix some areas without going through the rigmarole. And the lawyers don't like it, but there should be no legal fees. Because when you're going to blight some, to a homeowner and a young couple refixing up a house, $4,000 or $5,000 or even, you know, a $1,000 difference over 10 years, that's a lot of money to them. They can't afford to pay a lawyer $1,000 off the front end to fill out the forms and stuff. That's why we really, and I talked to Ty and he brought up the problem about the county assessor is two years behind, you know? Your taxes are two years behind, so you don't start the date this year on May 1st, but you don't pay your new taxes till the following year. So you lose a year, you see, because there wasn't no increment paid. But we made sure it was clear to the city on the promissory note what date it starts and it's the date the first taxes are paid. That's the 10-year start. So you always a year in arrears when you're paying your taxes. We made sure the promissory note was simple to figure out that that's how you date it. So you get the 10 years. But I could, you know, the one thing I might try to fix, I don't think it would happen that people just start bringing every single project in. They're going to put a new toilet in or two or something, or bathroom, and they bring it in and they want to micro TIF it. That, and their taxes will go up 100 bucks or something, just because two people beside them micro TIF theirs and prove the whole area, that you don't have a whole bunch of minor TIFs. But I could put a limit in that. But right now, I don't see that happening. People are really going to do it right. And try to fix up. Like I said, the perfect example would be the Habitat for Humanity. That'd be a boon for them and then people will do those.
On those buildings downtown, a lot of them, if they have a business and residential, would fall maybe in that 250 to million dollar? If they have a business in the bottom and housing on the top, would they fall under the million dollar limit for micro TIF? Or has that been looked at yet on how you'd classify those?
I would, if it's a business, I would, I would think you'd do it on the business side of it.
Okay.
You just decide, it's one address, one unit.
Yeah.
Just say it's a business side of it. It happens to have a housing, I mean, a living unit, but it happens a lot. And that's 10 million.
Yeah, okay.
If one million is multiple housing. That's why, let's say somebody, Grand Island, I got this part of this idea from the administrative Grand Island a few years back that rolled around in my head. They did that, they would push in an old house and somebody wanted to put a duplex up or a sixplex. Well, you could buy an old house, push it in, and there was three lots next to it and put a sixplex in or something, and you've got a million dollar limit there.
Okay.
If it's a multiple housing. We, I had to put limits in it because some senators, you know, thought they'd be somebody playing games with it and building. But I wouldn't mind if the mall was able to do it, quite frankly. A little bit more than that. No, we tried to make it as simple as possible so it isn't a headache for. I had in mind not only North Platte, but that little town of Sutherland, Utica is doing it. I had a, drove out there one night from Lincoln, they're like 30 some miles away. And they're going to do it. So that they have a city clerk who does everything from payroll to everything, didn't have a burdensome learning process on how to do this or lose sleep overnight. They were doing it right, that it was very, very simple. Put most of the original part on the person who's doing the TIF and no responsibility for the city employee. And then it's the city county treasurer has to make sure the money is sent to the city. And then they just got to make sure the money ends up at the owner. And on that, on that promissory note, it shows where they, if it changes ownership, who the owner is, it goes to. It's also worded correctly, we fought over these wording, to make sure it says who paid the taxes. Because it's in arrears. Somebody could have been living in there a year, but the last owner paid the taxes. Make sure it still goes back to that last owner. Because he's the one that paid the taxes on that year, not the new one.
Senator Grony, I think this is a really nice concept. You know, the question I have is the ultimate determination as to the assessed value of the property. You know, just for example, let's say you have a $150,000 home and you put in a new furnace, that doesn't necessarily increase the assessed value.
The assessor would come out and say, you didn't approve this.
So the assessor makes the ultimate determination what it is? Okay, that was my question.
Not you.
Okay, so they can put an estimate, but the assessor determines.
And it can change every year after that, even on an altiff project. It's the assessor that does. But what's nice about this is it's either or. It's the amount of the promissory note or 10 payments. So the house burns down, the owner gets out of town, takes insurance money, and they've only made three payments, but it's supposed to be $20,000 note. There's no taxes paid or minimum amount the next eight years, that's it, it's paid off. Or the, there's no funny plan that you're going to say, well, I'm going to improve this $200,000 and you should prove it 50. And the city would have gave a note or bond for $200,000 improvements? No. If it isn't, the work isn't done, the valuation isn't there, you just don't get the money. Nobody's held, nobody's held liable for the note or the bond payment. Because there's no bond exists, it's a promissory note. You do, you do your end of it and we'll do our end and give you the increment. You don't, do your end, the increment's a lot smaller. No games played.
Senator Grony, so you can't get a loan on the TIF itself, but could you get a mortgage based on the future appraised rate?
I don't know, it's up to the banker and the mortgage company. Yeah, well, I see what you're saying, yeah. It'd be a home improvement loan, I don't know, Ty would tell you, they probably do that all the time, don't you?
Yeah, we've looked at that pretty closely and the senator and I've talked a lot about that. The, if, to me, what's interesting about this is if you go to the Pawnee, he would have a couple of choices. If he needed more money upfront for the project, he could go through the rigmarole of the traditional TIF and apply for it and go through everything and have the expenses. Or he could go to the micro TIF, which would give him the benefit in the cash flow along the way of the tax reduction. If you translate that to a home, yes, you can't, you can't take that note and sell it because it goes with the owner of the property. So it doesn't help you defray your upfront costs. But like at our bank, we manually underwrite our mortgages. So from our standpoint, we can take that against the payment. We'll take that TIF and reduce the payment when we're out and running the ratios. And so I'm kind of like it, I kind of like it because us bankers that still use a calculator and a yellow pad are going to be able to count for this. And the ones that use the internet and the computer to make those decisions are going to have more trouble with it, so. But.
You cannot advertise our services.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say anything inappropriate, inappropriate. But I'm trying to illustrate the point to Mr. Garrick. But anyway, but what the point is, is I think it will get accounted for if you run somebody's mortgage qualifications, because they're not going to have that additional payment. And then you're probably going to assume that, you know, most people's income inclines a little bit each year. So you might have the mindset of by the time that this goes away after 10 years, they'll have an income incline that would offset that, that difference.
Picks up the old part of town. That's what it's intended for. But I am going to look at them, because maybe somebody could point out to me someday, give me some ammunition, how many vacant lots you actually have sitting in the mobile parts of town. Because that might be a real boon to somebody subcontracting, wants to come in and build a, you know, 1,500 square foot home for the packing plant worker. And it'd be a boon for them to sell it, you know? You need that, I'm not going to preach to you, but you need more of that housing that's under $275,000. And this could help you with that, with nicer housing.
Senator Grony, will this count against the maximum allowable TIF? Okay.
That's the point I was getting to, where you wouldn't have to, for cost reasons, pay somebody $40,000 or $50,000 to do a study. And then because of that, you just did the whole north side. Well, it'd run up against your numbers. You just maybe do a study and they say, we're going to do this block over here. I mean, this little area in here, you wouldn't want to do a lot by lot. But this six-block area here really needs some work. And we've got some contractors and homeowners really interested in doing this area and we want. It gives you a tool that you want, you can say, well, we want this area fixed. So this is the area we're going to blight and substandard and that's what will attract the investment then. And that's the area that will be fixed. Like I said, if you had an old mobile park, mobile home park, you could do it there.
Now, in that regard concerning a mobile home park, how do you assess the age of the, of the, of the structures?
You know, a lot of those, pre-owned, I'm just saying if you had some old structures in there. Let's say you had an old structure that was $5,000, an old beat-up old. And somebody said, well, I'm buying that and I'm going to put me my newer mobile home in there, that would work. You just haul that one off, throw it to the trash, it was $5,000. You bring the new, semi brings the new one in and man, you just did it.
So.
But you would have to own it, it's not a leased one or you, or where you have a lot and people bring their mobile home and then pay the mobile home guy for lease on the lot.
So the 60, the 60-year age is one of the qualifiers?
Yeah.
Not, it doesn't miss?
It has to be, it has to be 60. It's not one of like, they play the game now where it's one of the 13. It has to be 60 years and it has to be blighted and substandard.
So if the park is 60 years old, then that would qualify?
No, it would have to be the structure.
Okay. And mobile, I don't believe mobile homes create a property tax. That's, it's on a vehicle title, so it's.
Oh, it is, all right.
Yeah, so you would, so I don't think, yeah, it would be stick-built permanent structures, I believe.
Yeah, when you attach them to the, to a foundations, when they take them off the personal property role to the real estate tax role.
You know, I'm just going to say from a political standpoint, I think we're going to still have to deal with the same issue like we dealt with the west part of town. You know, if someone wants to blight the block, you're having the neighbors coming in saying, we don't want that. It's going to affect the value of our homes. I mean, that's the thing we're going to have to deal with, even with this program. I like the concept, but I think the political problems are still there. You know, there'd be me neighbors who don't want their neighbor's house being determined blighted and substandard.
Do it, but I don't see you doing one lot at a time, you're doing area.
Yeah.
I see that. Go ahead. Okay, I see that as an easy argument. They're going to improve their house. You know, it should bring up your value just a tiny bit. I, I mean, most people always love it when I come in and make the house look better when I buy it. I've never had anybody complain about that.
I would say, Councilman Woods has a good point. When you tell me my house is blighted and substandard, so you can build new houses in the pasture next to me, I get a little excited. But if you're going to fix up my neighborhood, it might look a little more.
But you're right, Jim. That will be an argument. I mean, I'm not, you're right.
I just anticipate somebody going to say, I don't like that, it's going to affect the value of my home. But that's, that's life, we have to deal with.
It will, because I've heard those said before when areas are blighted and substandard. And Ty, would a manufactured home, then would it be eligible? You know, I mean, it's on a foundation.
Yeah, I think anything on a set foundation, I think, I think the trigger on it's going to be, that's one. that's one thing we looked at with Nebraska bankers. It's real property.
Real property.
Yep. So, if it's stuck to a foundation, you're paying real estate tax.
That's what I thought.
You're going to be there. You know, to Mr. Nistley's question or point, which is a good one, I'm, I'm hopeful that this is going to help with the overall education process of what blighted and substandard is. And I know, um, Mr. Bain, before he sadly passed away, would tell us time and time again, the planning commission, that this designation does not hurt anybody's property value any way, shape, or form. If anything, it should help it because it makes it more developable. Um, but I hope, I hope that we get that. I think we'll get that in the short run. But I hope it helps further the education process on it over time, and maybe has some long-run benefit on the concern you have. I, we might have some short-term pain on it, but I hope we get some long-term gain from the understanding.
If you look at the blighted and substandard, you can sell it in two ways. You can say, "Your house is blighted and ugly, and that's why we did it." Or you can say, "No, citizens, you live in an area of town that's been there 90 years." But substandard is, we've got four-inch sewer pipe here, no, uh, sidewalk that's only two foot wide with tree where it's grown through. That's not your fault. That's age on, and that's substandard to today's standards. We get new property in here. We're going to get a bigger tax base. We're going to be able to, the city can concentrate on fixing up your, your existing infrastructure and still in building new stuff out at the golf course. And that's, and, uh, so that's, that depends how you sell it.
Well, in addition, like in that case, if I, if I was concerned, if I had a neighboring house that wanted it, I think what they will learn after they look into this is if they built onto their home with an addition, they're going to see the benefit. They could use micro TIF.
You can use micro TIF.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's been growing family, and you're pushing out the back room, or turn the garage into a living area, which has happened a lot of times. Uh, you know, that qualifies.
I believe from the administrative perspective, Matt and I have discussed that we probably will have a way to do this down to an individual lot, because I, I suspect that, I mean, I appreciate that areas are, are the intent, but we are going to have folks who say, "I want to do this to my house." And they're going to be appropriately placed, appropriately valued, and appropriately aged to be able to do so. So, I, and it would be difficult to say, "Well, you only want to do your house, therefore you can't do it." I don't think that's right. I don't think that's appropriate. So, administratively, we will have it set up so someone could just do their lot, if appropriate.
You want to draw the map? I color it in. I...
Lots of little dots.
You can do a lot of things with computers nowadays. Just because you don't have one at the bank, I mean.
I talked to Mr. Jacobson about that, Mike. We, we could get you a computer, Ty.
Well, we've got them. There's just some of us that don't know how to use them as well as others.
I agree too. No, thank you for inviting me. If there's anything else, you can call me anytime.
Well, Senator, we really appreciate your time today. Thank you for educating us. Anybody have any questions before we let the senator go?
I didn't pronounce any words wrong today, did I?
We avoided some specifically, just for...
And thank you for that.
Anyone have any other micro TIF-related information for the good of the order?
Real quick, I know there's been a lot of concern across the state about administration on this. But I would tell you, the, the fact that it's a 0% note, I don't want to skip over that too much. The nightmare on TIF accounting, a lot of it ties to the fact that there's an interest rate on a regular TIF bond, and so the value of it changes every day. And the fact that this has a 0% note is what really simplifies this from an administrative standpoint. So, I just want to point that out. If these all had a four, three, or four, or 5% interest rate on them, Dawn would need a big raise, I'm just saying. But, but they don't. They're 0%. And that was done by design in the, in the legislation and, and work to, to really make that. So, I don't have the concern about administration that I would have had if it would have been designed more like regular TIF.
Other comments? Well, let the record show. Oh, go ahead, Ed.
We've, we've got some properties in town that...
Microphone, please, Ed.
Thank you. By all outward appearances, probably should be condemned. And so, if that's the case, and let's say, for instance, they're on a gravel street, and the city condemns that property, is there a way that the city can acquire the property and then use micro TIF to upgrade some of the city's infrastructure in that area? In other words, maybe we could use the micro TIF, increase valuation of that lot to offset some paving costs, or some, uh, some water lines or sewer lines that...
But once you own it, there's no value, so there's no property tax to pay. It'd be a public...
Right. When the city owns it, there's no...
Yeah.
There's no property tax.
But one of the boons I see, let's say, let's say this existed with the Pawnee, all right? Uh, this existed. Instead of sitting there five years, if I was an investor, if I was an individual who said, "I'm looking for properties to fix up," I would go down and find out who, what tax liens are out there. And it, and I, and I would find the owner, and I'd say, "Hey, I'll pay you this for this property, and I'll pay off the tax lien, because I can micro TIF this." I think you're going to see a lot of tax liens paid off sooner, because people are going to invest, uh, contractors are going to say, "How, I, the price of this is too high, this property." So, I'm going to go down and find out who owns tax liens, these old houses that are sitting there and are waiting for the five-year period for, before the person who owns the tax lien can take ownership. But that person who owns that tax lien don't own it, as we found out. That, that contractor could go find the owner, say, "Hey, when you sober up, I'll write you a check for $5,000," and then he pays off the tax lien. And he's got a piece of property he can micro TIF. I shouldn't say that. I got an awful bad sense of humor, but you know what I'm saying. You could do that. I, I would do it if I was a, a contractor. I'd start looking at tax liens. Thank you. It'd turn them, it'd turn them faster. Because that's one thing I hear from cities, small cities, is these tax lien lots. Nobody's taking care of them. You got to wait five years. And who would go by that for any other reason? A contractor. Why would he? Because he's got to clean it all up. He's got no incentive to do it. He'd build a house somewhere on an empty lot.
I was just going to comment, Ed, that the Judy and the property resolution team are looking at the land bank legislation that was changed a couple of years ago.
I was going to mention that.
Yep. There's some tools for what you're visiting about there that I think would be very valuable. But I know Judy and, had have been looking at that, that, I think that just passed a couple of years ago, didn't it?
Same year.
Or was it, what was that, last year as well?
And that was the argument. If micro TIF passes, there wouldn't be a need for land banks. Because, and that's what the land, the land bank is, you, you, you get in the queue, and you can buy, the city can buy the tax liens too, and own them. Uh, but if, but if they come, but if an investor, and you owned them because you had a plan for a park, and they found the owner, you could buy, that investor could buy that, and you would lose control of it, because whoever owned the property then is required to pay off the tax lien. So, anyway, if I understand it right, during debate. Anything else?
Other questions? Going once, going twice. Let the record show, our meeting ended at 2:25 and about 10 seconds. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Did you subtract the two minutes so fast?
I go by that clock. Thank you, though, Ed.
You're welcome. That's right, you will.
I'm going to have the clock fixed, Mr. Woods.